Utilize that space so that you can have different initiatives and things just to bring people together. Economic assets, that, that, that's your businesses, right? We have a Prairie Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we have economic for me, those are assets to the city because it can bring people together and economically help and elevate the city. The stories, so stories about the history of the city. Uh, there's a guy named Che, uh, Che, and he, I think he goes by Che Day Tripper. So he goes to different cities in Texas, different small cities, and he talks about the history of that city. And a lot of cities use that history to, you know, spur tourism. Um, you know, it, it brings, um, it brings a certain type of pride. So like for the city of Prairie, like the fourteen farm families. And that is a part of our history that you can advertise and use to bring people together. Uh, local residents, you've got residents that have all types of different professions, been all different types of backgrounds. You can utilize the local residents so that you can continue to build the city forward by the skill that they have. Associations, so, uh, your, your churches, right? Your churches can get back in a multitude of ways. Uh, and local institutions, things like schools, of course, we have Prairie Am University, we have Jones Elementary. So that community engagement board can find those assets, map those assets, so we can start utilizing them to its, uh, to its most capacity to, and be as most efficient as possible. Appreciate it. Alright, so building human capacities, so what is building human capacity? Human capacity relates to the people who are paid or volunteer to help implement community priorities. So let's say, you know, certain communities, uh, there's a lot of trash, right? And you only have about three people in that community that help pick up trash every month. A community engagement board can help, you know, go out, you know, do a campaign. Instead of having three, now you have five, now you have seven, now you have ten. Now you're building that human capacity to help in different areas of need. And that's just an example. So what, so when you have a community engagement board, is, you wanna have strategic planning, right? You don't wanna just be on the board and not know exactly where you're headed. You wanna have a plan of what you wanna try to implement. So what have cities done with their community engagement board? They have community watch programs, they've had neighborhood programs and workshops. But depending on different neighborhoods, different neighborhoods are different needs. Uh, community cleanups, you know, bringing people together, green initiatives. Um, community newsletter, right now the Prairie Hills subdivision have a community newsletter so they can let the people in that neighborhood know what's going on so they can continue to build that camaraderie. Uh, focus groups, surveys, online discussion boards, so they can, if something's happening within the city, they can work together, make a survey, put it out there, try to get that input from the city, and then create associations or committees. So like I said, for a problem that may need to be fixed, let's say, we got, we're getting a lot of off-campus student housing, right? Let's say you wanna create a committee of that. That way they can work together to try to, you know, help the students out as much as possible. With a community engagement board, you can come together and have and share those ideas. So this is the Prairie View neighborhoods, um, based off of the planning and zoning map. So Alta Vista, Wyatt Chapel, Clark subdivision, Hill Crest, Osborne, Clark, Pine Meadows, Prairie Acres, Prairie Hills, section one, two, three, and four. This is just all the sections that we have within the city of Prairie View. If there's one of them, I apologize. Now with the concept, thank you. Now, now with the concept of a community engagement board, we wanna try to separate the city to seven, to seven sections, right? Take seven sections, so you can kinda see, you got section one right here, you got section two, and you can see the streets are what divided. So you got section one, section two, section three, section four, section five, section six, section seven, right? So you, you break it down into different parts because each, each of these parts don't have the exact same needs, right? The needs of Rosewood may be different from the concern of the Alta Vista, right? So you wanna make sure you have representatives from that area that can speak on behalf of the area. So whenever it comes time to give advice or say, oh, this is what we need, it is not, you're not speaking for us for an area that you may not know about. Thank you. And so how to get on the community engagement board? So first, of course, with community engagement board, we want people to have opportunity to get on. So there'll be an application, so right here, there's a real simple application, and all it asks is, where do you live in? You know, why do you wanna be on the community engagement board? Uh, do you have any qualifications, just so we can get an understanding of who's on the board? Next, uh, there'll be opening time and dates if you have a chance to sign up for it. So we would announce, okay, from this date to this day, you can get an application that way, just, you know, just not spur of the moment. You know, okay, I have three, four weeks to be a part of the community engagement board if you want so. Mayor and City Council will work together to choose people on the board based off of the applications, just so we can have a good understanding of who's on the board. And then we'll have meetings once a month based on the best time of day of the people, uh, that are part of the board. Also, what is define outcomes? One, you have the community engagement strategic plan, you improve the community morale, you have an increased understanding of the concerns of the city, you have better representation, enhanced communication, and you have improved neighborhood relationships. So does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Can we have the applications and copy of the briefing?
Say again, sir?
Can you have a copy of the briefing?
Yeah, so, um, I can get this printed out. Uh, what I, what I wanna do first is get all the inputs, write some of the things down just in case, uh, I may want to switch some things around. Just so I can give y'all the, the final product and not the rough draft.
Um, I'm not sure if you're gonna do it, but just, that was excellent for starters, council. Would you kindly make sure that that gets posted on the city's website?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and like I said, so that's the rough draft, because of course if I end up making changes to it, I wanna make changes to the presentation. So I'm just here to get an input so I can make the revisions if needed.
Okay. I want the time frame.
So.
The time frame from getting on the city website.
So like I said, the goal is, I'm, I'm taking all the input that people are giving. So depending on how much input is given, uh, I may put it on the next agenda, but I also still gotta work with the attorney, 'cause it also has to be an ordinance because it is a board. So give or take, it may take four to six weeks depending on when, uh, me, the count, uh, me, the attorney, and we all come to a agreement on what we think is feasible for the community engagement board. Thank you for the question, Dr. Brown.
Thank you for taking the initiative and doing that, I appreciate that. I love the title leadership style that you, uh, present. Question has to do with, number one, there were some things in your presentation that may either coincide or conflict or overlap the city charter. And I wanna make sure that what you have presented here is not already covered in the city charter or doesn't overlap the city charter or doesn't conflict with the city charter.
Uh, maybe specific in what, what areas?
Well, there were several things. One of them had to do with forming a board. And in the section that has to do is the city council, there's a procedure for forming a board.
Good, ma'am.
That's one. Uh, I don't wanna go in, I can talk with you later about the others, but my point is, look at what you wanna create and what you wanna do, and make sure it doesn't bump heads with a procedure that we have in place already in the city charter or in our ordinances to do that. And make sure that the process that you use folds from the procedures we already have in place.
If, if I'm not mistaken, isn't it within the city charter that council has the power to?
Avoid it, create. The board already, already exists.
Yeah, often all those issues would come up, as you say, here, like with the presentation program, the city attorney's.
Sure.
Whatever is there.
Yeah, that's the comments that we've already started going through already with you.
That was just one thing that I thought, uh, that I mentioned. There are several other issues that probably need to be looked at more closely because you talked about forming a board. And the procedure for doing that is already in place. Now the process, that's a different story. So what I'm saying is, be sure that what you're proposing to do in formulating a new board or reforming an existing board is in line with what the city count, the city charter stipulates or the city ordinances stipulate. So we won't have further down the road a conflict in what we're doing.
Yes, ma'am, and you wanna talk after it as well, so we can get more specific, just in case, I'm always available.
Councilman, just so I'm clear, did I understand that the board has already been created for the concept of the board? Is that right? And there aren't, there aren't members?
No, ma'am, we haven't, we haven't.
We, we just approved the late one.
We approved the creation of the board.
Right.
And this was the next step, was to identify what the board was going to look like. And so now the step after that is to begin making the appointments.
Well, 'cause, and are you, are you talking about when you said the citizens advisory board? Yeah. That you, yeah, so, and I wanted to be correct because, because, uh, community, because with citizens advisory board, there's a multitude of citizen, citizens advisory boards. Uh, you can have a community engagement board, you can have like a tourism, a community, uh, or a citizen advisory board. Because the citizens advisory board is just a board that's not specific, but just saying that citizens can advise a particular topic. So this is, uh, a specific one, which is a community engagement board.
So if you remember, it started off as the citizens advisory board was what I put that, and then you presented the engagement board. And we, we collaborated to one idea to the community engagement board, and that's what was approved.
Yeah, so, but in, in that circumstance, because it was approved as a citizens advisory board, would it be, would it have to be changed to specifically say?
But if I remember correctly, it'd be approved as an engagement, with a community, a citizen engagement board. I called it an advisor, advisory board, you called it the engagement board, and we, this is to the engagement board, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the, that the legislation lines up.
I mean, I mean, we could look.
But we, we could look, we could look.
If I remember correctly, that's what we.
Yeah, we, we can just look into it, it, it's, it's not.
Yeah, and, and so the ordinance that you eventually bring to city council will be in compliance with the charter as to how the appointments are made, and it will be in compliance with, with whatever you've already done, and that's the whole purpose of us going through it together once you get your details kind of worked out and mesh it all together so that there's no conflicting appointments.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you proposing a name change to what was already approved, an advisory board? Or are you creating another board? Because you didn't talk about an engagement board, you didn't vote on an engagement board, you voted on an advisory board. And it was an advisory committee, if I, if I remembered correctly. It was an advisory committee. So this is a whole new thing, and you're using self-sharing ideas?
Yeah, so, and what me and Randall just said, we're gonna make sure we go back and make sure those two line up. Because I, I called it a community engagement board, 'cause that's what it is, a community engagement board. But we gotta look at, back at the specific writing of it, just so it makes sense. But even when we, when we approved the citizens advisory board, there was no meat to it, in the sense saying, this is exactly what it's going to do. So we're just gonna make sure that it lines up, so we can move forward with it.
We, when we, when it was presented, it was presented as the same idea. So, so what, what we called it, we have to go back throughout what we called it, we either called it engagement board, we called it advisory board.
You was calling it an advisory committee, that's what it was called.
So, so we'll go back and we'll review what we called it, and then if we have to bring it back, then that's what we'll do.
Other than that, any more questions? Thank y'all for y'all time.
Great job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Item one, discussion and possible action on the approval of city council meeting minutes dated July one, two thousand nineteen, with council's proposal.
Uh, I moved it with, so, uh, July, going, uh, city council meeting minute.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the council accepted July first, two thousand nineteen, city council meetings. You've heard the motion, ready for questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. But Shane.
Ayes have it with council round extension. Item two, discussion and possible action on the approval of the city council meeting minutes dated July eight, two thousand nineteen, with council's proposal.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Council Wallace.
Uh, I wanna point for the record, so if you look to agenda item eight, um, where it says council and rolling, it said unreadiness, but doesn't give like a specific yes or no. So I just wanna make sure, um, that we're clear, like, even though there was unreadiness, uh, in past, we never had that as a part of the actual saying that, you can't vote unreadiness.
Right.
So we just wanna make sure, in this form of the binding, uh, just make sure it's clear, it's a yes or no.
Any other unreadiness?
Uh, if I might, is that a motion to amend the minutes as presented?
Yes, uh, I, yeah, I moved that we amend, um, well, it, it's actually in a couple of spots, and it, agenda item eight
And twelve.
And twelve. Agenda item eight and twelve, uh, to reflect that it's either yes or no and not unreadiness.
So, so is, it would need to be a specific motion or a motion for her to correct these minutes and then bring them back at the next meeting? If you don't know if it was yes or no?
Or?
Alright, yeah, so, now they still reset that motion?
Oh, yeah.
I moved that, that the meeting minutes be corrected and brought back at the next meeting?
Second. I have a reading. Okay, hold on just a second for the floor, that's, this is item two, right?
Yeah.
Okay. On item two, uh, discussion and possible action on the approval of city council meetings dated July eight, two thousand nineteen. You've heard a motion that it be taken back for corrections, and we have the readiness, Council Jones?
If items are moved to the next city, council, mean, are they, are they copied and pasted or?
The agenda item is moved to the next city council, and then she would present you a new minutes to.
No, I'm saying, so if this is.
Give it a number.
Alright, so like, uh, item eleven, it says, city councilman Jones made a motion to move item eleven to the next meeting, to the following meeting. Um, if it's moved to the following meeting, is this copied and pasted and put on the next agenda?
Uh, I don't know the practice of the city secretary, but unless there's a motion and a second and a vote by city council, it wouldn't be technically automatic.
No, it, it, well, we vote on it, if you look at number eleven, and then look at number twelve.
Okay, wait, I don't see that eleven was voted on.
We voted on all, so like, yeah, we go through the process. I don't know if necessarily, I don't necessarily know if she has went back because it wasn't, we didn't have the discussion. So we just need her to look at, so what you're saying, the motion of Councilman Jones should be to go back on those numbers and put the voice vote, um, for the next time, and then make sure that these are brought back to the subsequent meeting, which says August twelfth of July, where, whatever the dates are.
Do you understand what he's asking?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so, so your motion is to have the entire minutes reviewed to make sure that all action items were accurately reflected?
Like, so number three on the minute, we have a date and we had a, 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 a motion. And we just wanna make sure that this agenda item is brought to the next agenda.
I think, I think Councilman Jones was asking, 'cause, uh, like with item twelve, uh, discuss and take action on a detailed processing procedure by Mayor Allen on the hiring of Officer, Officer Ross. It was moved, it was asked to be moved, and the majority voted yes. I think so, he was asking, whenever that happens, wouldn't it be automatically put on the next agenda?
If, if there's a motion and a vote to do so, it should be yes. I, I don't know the procedures of the city secretary and how that's done, and we have a new city secretary, so it may be a transitional issue. But yes, if city council votes for it to go on, on an agenda, then that should go on that agenda.
Well, and this, this law.
But it said to be moved, but even on the recording, it didn't give, what, it just said move.
Okay, so that, that just may be a clarification and, and, and how we're doing things, and also enacclimating our, our new city secretary. So, as she, she checked the minutes and just wasn't clear where it was supposed to go, so that may be a oversight on our part. So we just make sure we clarify those things.
So do, which leads to my next question, do you put the agenda together?
Yes, I, I put this agenda together, I just took over what was already there.
So the agenda which we have today, when, when we send our agenda items in, they come to you formally?
Hold on, let's, let's, uh, let's finish the motion, we have a motion on the floor, and then we can.
I mean.
Get into that. Now we're going on to the next agenda, and we're in the process for the agenda.
I thought we had a readiness.
Well, a readiness because I'm asking due to the fact that if we ask for something to go or carry over to the next agenda, and it's not carried over to the next agenda, then who sets the agenda? She could possibly put it on the next agenda, but instead it doesn't make the agenda. So I'm just asking upon what's the process in which, if, if, when we send in our agenda items, uh, now if you're on board responding, do, do you make that agenda or?
We work, we work on the agenda together. No, Ms. Bynum does not quote unquote make the agenda in the sense that you may be asking.
Thank you.
All the questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Item three, discuss and take action on the documentation if Officer Mosley is certified to handle K nine units. Council Wallace. Mayor. Can you clarify the motion, because when she listens to the tape, she think, it's gonna, it sounds as if we just passed the motion. We just passed the agenda item, and we had a whole new different motion, so can you clarify what just happened? It was to be corrected and taken to the next meeting, that's my understanding. Is that your, is that your understanding, Councilman Wallace, that was your issue?
Well, we just making sure that Ms. Bynum understands, it's not for us, it's just making sure that, so that way, next meeting, when we come forth, that Bynum will bring the updated agenda minutes to the next meeting. So we just making sure that she, uh, understands to bring the agenda minutes.
Right, I just wanna make sure the maker of the motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You have to, as far as.
Okay, so you're good, Ms. Bynum?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, item three, discuss and take action on the documentation if Officer Mosley is certified to handle K nine unit, Council Wallace.
I moved, uh, we moved item number three and discussed at our last city council meeting.
And you're saying this is done, it's handled, what are you saying?
You provided us the information that shows that it was updated with Waller County, uh, the information that, um.
Texas Commissioner Law and Order.
So.
So we're supposed to get it, we got a report that's provided?
No, so I think, so for this one, 'cause at the last meeting, I'm looking at the meeting minutes as well. Um, even though the mayor, like, he showed us the, he showed us the proof that Mosley was handled as, or is now like the trainer, we were asking the report on the K nine.
Right.
And so, and this one said, provide the report for the K nine. So you have a report for the K nine?
No, hold on, the agenda item says the certification to handle K nine, not a report on K nine.
No, 'cause, 'cause, 'cause I never.
I know what we asked for.
Yeah, 'cause I never asked, I never asked for this agenda item to be on the next one. We asked us for a, provide a report for the K nine.
And that is what we asked, that it's not just on the agenda.
Underneath it, it says provide a report for K nine. It says right here, provide a report.
So do we have the report?
Yeah, we didn't ask for it.
So do we have the report? What is the report? A report on the K nine, what, what does that mean?
Mr. Mayor.
So, hold the dog here, what do you want? We specifically ident, we specifically gave instructions at the last meeting. We asked for, to give the, for a report to be given on, uh, what the K nine had been used for. Has he, have he had any drug busts? Has he recovered or recouped any money? That's the, that's what we asked for, and all we had to do was simply get the report. But if you don't have it, just say, I don't have it. Oh, no, no, I don't have to say that. Officer Mosley, would you come forward, please?
No.
We want a report. No, no, hold on, hold on. A report can be oral or verbal. This is, I go, hold on, you asked and I'm giving. So let's work together. You can't ask and then tell the format right up here. It didn't come out last time. Officer Mosley, would you give us an, an update for, for the benefit of the council and the public on some of the uses of the K nine, uh, since you've been the handler, and how long? 'Cause I know it hasn't been long, but some of the interactions with your going to support other agencies, some of those kinds of things without the law enforcement details, but maybe the agency that you assisted and the dog coming down the door, things like that.
Okay, um, so, good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for having me. So I can't give you full details because it is a legal matter and it is ongoing cases. Um, but I can tell you that since I've, uh, handled the dog, we've had several narcotics seizures. Uh, here in Prairie View alone, we've assisted state troopers, not only within our city limits and on two ninety, but on highway six, uh, out on highway six. Um, it was actually a, um, decent quantity of THC and other prescription things on two ninety not too long ago with the state troopers, um, in one stop. It was a stolen car, stolen gun, uh, meth, cocaine, heroin, and marijuana. Um, that's all coming through our city. Um, I have ways of, things that I track to where I can see videos of our community. Um, a lot of people post a lot of things on social media. Um, there's been people who I've had to track down that were driving on two ninety, uh, doing drugs, actively doing drugs with children in the vehicle while driving through our city. Um, over here, down the road, uh, in student housing, uh, every day, they love to post it on their social media, uh, narcotics and drugs that they have. So these are all illegal things that are going on within our city. Uh, there's a few people that we're watching because they are known, uh, drug dealers, and they're bringing all this into our community and destroying the community with it. Uh, there is also an explosive K nine that we have that does not cost you all anything at all. I foot all the bill for the explosive K nine. Um, with him, we've done the Freedom Trust in Waller. He's also available to the college for any type of explosive activity they may have, their explosive threats. He's available to the elementary that we have here, to all those surrounding counties. I'm the only one within the area with that type of capability, with that training as well. Uh, with that, there's also FBI reports and things that the community doesn't get. Um, and there's the Sergeant, Sergeant Mistrick and Waller. He deals with a lot of that and tracks it with explosives and FBI and things of that nature. And he can actually print up the report because in Texas, in the Waller County area, there's been improvised explosive devices. There's been pipe bombs, there's been things like that. Those are things that can seriously hurt people. Uh, me being a combat veteran, I've seen what they can do to people. Imagine having a sporting event or something here at the college, and someone decides they wanna put a bomb out, and we don't have that capability to possibly stop it or detect it because of the dog not being here. That's gonna be a lot of lives that have been taken because of that. But having that dog here, we can help to try to prevent that from happening. Uh, when you have these people who hide, who have guns, who are shooting up, uh, Rosewood and things like that, uh, you have a dog that can go around and he can find his shell casings, but he can, 'cause he's trained to find explosives. You have a dog that can find these narcotics, you have a dog that can go after these people that run away from you and find them when they hide from you to try to, you know, make our community a better community. Uh, since I've been patrolling, um, I've gotten a lot of feedback from the community who tell us all the time, oh, you know, thank you, thank you, we feel so much safer. There's people in Pine Island who literally, they told dispatch, and dispatch told me, they said that they were looking at moving out of Prairie View because Prairie View was not a safe place. They said now that they've seen us more, they see a K nine around there, and they see what we're doing and everything. They said that they actually reconsidered living here, and they wanna stay here now because they feel safer.
Great job, great, great you have me on board, thank you for helping us with the dog.
Thank you.
Oh, is, when you called out on these services, is the dog used for free?
Is the dog used for free?
Yes, so, so that like if a neighboring, uh, city doesn't have a dog, they call you for the dog, you just take the, like, what, I think what council wanted to see is like, so as we invest into the dog, where's the dog, uh, brought back to the city? So is, it, I, I'm assuming that it's brought more, um, well, less, less crime activity, not if we have the dog. But what's, when other agencies call you out, we just allow the dog to go and do services for, for it's joy?
So whenever, um, when other agencies call me out, uh, with the explosive K nine, it's free of charge because the dog is free of charge to y'all. Y'all don't foot any bill on that explosive dog.
That's good.
Uh, now, yeah, there's two different dogs, there's two different dogs. Um, the explosive K nine, he's one that's trained also, he has all certifications, I gave him to the mayor and everything, of training we've done. Um, I foot the bill on him a hundred percent.
And that, and that dog in the military is commonly referred to as a bomb dog?
Yes.
What, oh, what do you mean by you, uh, one hundred percent?
I foot the bill on him, I pay for his food, I pay for all his medical bills and everything. On the explosive dog, on the narcotics dog, that dog was donated. So the narcotics dog was donated to Prairie View. Uh, with that one, if something happens with him or something, then Prairie View gets the bill on him, as far as, um.
So that, that's one message.
Yeah, medical bills and things like that, Prairie View gets the bill on him. Now, uh, with that being said, because of course I'm just now coming into this, um, I've been told that a lot was spent on the dog, and I can tell you right now, initial startup, it is kind of pricey, but. But if you get someone that's experienced, that knows how to circumvent that and knows what the dog truly needs, then that keeps your costs down. Um, for no reason, the pricing that I heard y'all spent on it, it shouldn't have been that much. Now that I'm here and I know what the K nine actually needs, the only thing that y'all should really be paying for at this point right now is the food. And then he goes until we get a night, a decent setup back here. We're trying to get them just to put down some concrete. And if they do that, then the dog can come here. That cuts y'all's cost with animal control with Doug. And Doug's actually given us a big break and charged only fifty dollars to, um, keep the dog there. So the dog goes to Doug whenever I'm off. On my weeks that I'm off or my days I'm off, that's where he goes. And he'll stay there for a little bit, then when I bring him back here, he stays here. Right now, my vehicle's in the shop, so I can't bring the dog here currently.
Okay, my next question is, uh, if something was to happen with the dog, with the, with the dog, we didn't know that we had two dogs. The city is not at no liability of the dog?
So if something was to happen with him, um, then with him, it's not a liability, um, because as long as it's the administrative, um, uh, the administrative official says this is our K nine. But if something was to happen with my dog, with that one, as far as like if he got hurt or something, I'll, I'm paying for that. I'll pay for that. I don't expect the city to foot that bill. Uh, if someone was to get bit by the dog or something, then the only people that are going to get bit by the dog is people that the dog gets released after. The difference between an experienced handler and an inexperienced handler is associating the dog with people. That dog that y'all had and no, no, uh, bad words on Phillips or anything like that, he was inexperienced handler, and the dog got associated with too many people. And so the dog would run around here and all that. That's not how K nine works. The dog comes here to work. The dog's not here to be a pet. That's one of the reasons y'all didn't know that y'all had another dog is because y'all don't see the dog that much. Because the dog comes out to work. The dog doesn't come out to play and be socialized with everybody.
Yeah, but we're just making sure that, that we go and, I assume, is the city of Prairie View.
No, no, you shouldn't because of the fact, the reason I say that you shouldn't is because if the dog goes to bites on him, the dog is being sent on a bite.
Hold, hold on.
He has to be a part of the department.
The li, the liability was reported to us by former chief Solomon, and he checked with T M L, and he said.
It's another dog.
If, if we need to vote in the use of a bomb dog, do we need to make that official? Is that something we need to put on the next agenda?
Um, that's something that city council had asked if I would look into, and I told them that I would need mayoral direction to do so with T M L. So I'm happy to do so if you'd like me to look into that and see if we need it on the next agenda.
Please, yeah, because we, we know we spoke to them, but council had voted for the initial drug dog. But if we need to make it official, but T M L did tell us that the, we, there would be no change in our policy, because the dog would be covered, that sort of thing. So we'll just, if we need to bring that one on.